Our board meeting again from executive session and we are to our consent agenda.
Okay.
Is there more people out there? Do I hear a motion?
I'll go ahead and read. Consent.
Thank you, David. Thank you, Dustin. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. And we have public input. Do we have any other public input? I know, I know.
I just see a lot of people in the hallway. That's why I was trying to. Yeah.
Okay, they know and you told them they can come in. Welcome. Come on in.
Yeah. I'm gonna do one thing. I was like, I give a little thank you.
Sure. Yes. All right. I'm like, you're so much younger than us, though. That is. But I wanted to be called Brandon. That's what I wanted to be called. It's too hard for them for now.
You're up first. Get him ready. As soon as Kim calls.
Okay, I'm on record. All right. All right, we have everybody from the hallway. This looks a lot better. Welcome, everyone. Yes, absolutely. And everyone online that have been patient for us, we are now to our public input. And we have just one person for public. Okay, Garrett King and public input on use of cell phones in the classroom.
Is this on? Who knows?
We can hear you.
Perfect. Ladies and gentlemen, the board today, I want to talk to you about an issue that has become increasingly prevalent in our classrooms. The problem of cellphone use. With the advent of smartphones, the use of mobile devices in the classroom has become a common practice. While these devices have brought some benefits, they have also created numerous problems that are adversely affecting the learning environment. Many students find it difficult to resist the temptation to check their phones during class, whether it be to respond to messages or scroll through social media. This not only diverts their attention away from the lesson being taught, but it can also disrupt the learning of those around them. Moreover, cellphone use in the classroom has been linked to addiction and dependency, particularly in younger students. Studies have shown that excessive cellphone use can lead to decreased attention span, poor memory, retention, and even mental health issues such as anxiety and depression. The real issue about what I just said, or the T as the kids say, is that I did not write a single word of that. That was all from the popular chat tool, ChatGPT, a tool that I've already started to see in my classroom, a tool that is already widely being used. And a tool that will, if we do not curb it, will severely hurt the long-term learning of our students. A tool that frankly would not be possible if we had a cellphone ban. What we have now is a case-by-case or classroom-specific cellphone ban, and it does not simply work. It's been a single day across our campus, and you will notice this. My teacher, my entire teaching philosophy is based on relationships. The better relationship that I have with a student, the easier it is to reach them, to care for them, and to help them when they really need it, to be a shoulder and an ear. Nope, I am not a strict teacher. I want kids to like me. I want to create a positive experience and have them enjoy coming to my classroom. If I become one of the few teachers on campus who enforces a full cellphone ban, it becomes a point of contention. A point of argument, a point of friction in the relationship. A teacher's specific policy makes it so that I become the teacher that bans cell phones, the strict teacher, the teacher that doesn't understand, the teacher that they don't like. I refuse, quite frankly, to implement a cellphone ban in my classroom without it being school-wide. It is unfair and incredibly hard to be a teacher who enforces it when others don't. A full school-wide cellphone ban would return a huge amount of learning time back to our students, and the retention level of our students would be off the charts. In short, it would be a game changer. Um, script. Furthermore, the research about detrimental self effects of cell phones and social media use are undeniable. In my estimation, we are actually failing our students by not having a strict no-tolerance cellphone policy. In fact, it could be argued that we are allowing this problem of mental health and retention to grow and continue. We as educators, as a district, as people who love and care about kids, need to be part of the solution, not the problem. If we can help reduce the amount of screen time and therefore distractions and mental health issues students have, we should be doing everything we can to do so. To not do so is a dereliction of our duty. Of course, the learning time that would be gained goes without even mentioning the advent of AI. It is already ubiquitous. It is already on the phones and in the fingertips. The social media app Snapchat has an AI bot. Now, rather than skimming a reading to find the answer, students just type the question into ChatGPT. I have caught many students of mine already doing this. Need to know why the US cut off oil shipments to Japan. They're not going to read. They're just going to ask ChatGPT. And ChatGPT will give them a great answer, a good answer. I absolutely adore my administration. They are doing a bang-up job at Marshfield. I wouldn't change them for anything, and if they ever left, I would be devastated. Truly, I would be. With that said, they have opposed a total cellphone ban. When it has been brought up them to directly, not just by me. To me, they mentioned North Bend. They said, well, we'll see how they like it, how it goes. Well, I'm here to tell you, North Bend loves it. I've been in contact with many North Bend teachers. In fact, I've befriended many of them. They say it has made a huge impact on learning and culture. We have a firsthand experience right across town that this does work. We should follow suit. The North Bend teachers also said that their belief was the admin's opposition to it was reluctance to have to enforce it and deal with parents. I do not want to say this is the reason that admin does not want a cellphone ban, but if it is, it is a very weak reason and does not put students first. What I ask for you, the board, to do is implement a cellphone ban and have it ready for 2023-24. I have a dream of 2023-24 being a school year without phones. A year with a real rigid tolerance, no tolerance policy, that if the phone is out in class, it is taken. No warnings, no exceptions. This is something that is also supported by the staff at MHS. All but one teacher today supports the school, the school-wide ban that I was able to come in contact with. That was 28 classroom teachers, including myself. That was after school today. I didn't get to all of them. Teachers who want their classrooms back, teachers who are tired of fighting with students, teachers who want their students to succeed, and like I said, there are more of them. This is something that must happen, not only to improve student learning, but to improve staff morale and retention. This issue is grinding on the staff immensely. If we want to take care of our staff, be stewards of our students' overall health, and be serious about the academics of our schools, we must get rid of the phones. I truly believe that if all of you have a good-faith discussion about what is best for our overall, our students' overall health and learning. And do not cave to parents' demands or their desire to contact their students all the live long day, that you will reach the same conclusion that I have. Any discussion I have ever had that puts student learning and health first has always netted the same conclusion that cell phones must go. Thank you for your time.
Mr. King, what do you, what do you teach?
I teach 11th grade social studies, but I also taught 8th grade social studies as well. And the junior high, as you know, has a cellphone ban.
Well, you are very passionate, and I really appreciate that, man. What a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
So I do have a couple of questions for you. So are you promoting bands in the classrooms or during the entire school day?
I would like to see the model that North Bend has approached at first, which is in the classroom, if it is out, it is taken away, no exceptions. They can have it in the hallway, they can have in their backpacks. But if it is out in classroom, that includes headphones as well, right? We see the earbuds gone.
Okay, and then how would you address parent concerns regarding safety?
Absolutely. First responders have said that in an emergency situation, it is actually detrimental to have students contact parents. Because it provides misinformation, and in case of a school shooting, it could give positions away. Furthermore, all of us in this room have spent decades in public school and did not have cell phones, and we were perfectly fine. To me, this is a non-issue. This is caving to parents' demands, and I do not mean to be disrespectful at all. I'm passionate about this. But this is caving to parents' demands. They wanted to contact them all the live long day. Why? It is not helpful to our learning environment. Why can we not say, no, if you need to contact your parent, call the office. They will send a note.
All right, well, thank you for that. And also just wondering if you're aware that. I think I heard this morning that in some cases, it's possible for students to utilize ChatGPT on their district provided Chromebooks.
That would be an issue for tech or IT department. That is a major concern, I agree, but our, my, my school computer that I access via our wifi blocks ChatGPT. I cannot access it. I have to use my hotspot on my phone.
So just something else to be aware of. We had a presentation on ChatGPT at our last board meeting, and it was pretty insightful.
Okay. Other questions?
Thank you.
All right, moving on items for information, Carly. Would anybody, Carly, to place? Okay. Speech and debate, Kayla. Students, welcome.
Good evening, members of the board. I'm Cecily Visser. I'm the senior captain of the Marshfield High School Speech and Debate Team.
I'm Junior Burra. I'm a part of the Marshfield Speech and Debate Team and also leadership.
We are asking for the ability to travel to Phoenix, Arizona this June from the 11th to the 18th in order to compete at the national level. I will be competing in program oral interpretation, which I was a state champion in this year.
And I will be competing in humorous interpretation.
It's a, speech has been a very important part of my high school career, and I would never have been able to get it in front of you guys like I am today. We are asking for the ability to travel, like I said, from June 11th to June 18th to Phoenix, Arizona in order to compete at the national level.
Speech and debate has changed my life tremendously. It is, it made me confident in being able to speak to everybody and knowing how to talk to everybody and knowing what to say.
We understand that we will be fundraising for ourselves, which is something, a tradition that we have. And this year, well, we have money left over from last year. The Confederate tribe has donated an enormous amount of money that will help us this year. But we are also doing letter campaigns. Students, pastors have reached out and offered donations, crazy amounts for us. We will also be doing team bonding activities. We have a very, very young team this year. We have, I think, three seniors on our team. And so I think that this will be a truly a rebuilding moment for them. And give them the opportunity not only learn from us, but learn at the national level, which I think will truly, truly make it so we continue having a speech and debate team that wins at our school.
Okay.
We have a question. How many are on those speeches?
We have, I believe, about 12 or 13 students, but only six qualified for the national tournament, yes.
And are you going to still have a silent auction this year?
We will not be doing our usual forensic fundraiser this year, but hopefully next year.
Okay.
Absolutely.
So much fun. Oh, my goodness. You guys are going to do great. I would like to ask our board members, do we have a motion on the table?
So, well, seeing as it's not on our board items later in the agenda, I would move that we approve the travel requests for the speech and debate team for. traveling to Phoenix, Arizona, June 11th through 18th for nationals.
Thank you, Adrian. Yay, thanks, David. Any discussion?
Good luck.
Yeah.
Thank you guys so much.
Wear sunscreen. It's gonna be so hot. Drink lots of water.
Thank you guys so much for your time.
I'm Dustin. Did you have your hand up? Okay, and we still have to vote. So David.
Yay.
Diane.
Hi.
Adrian.
I.
Kevin. Dustin. I, and I vote I as well. So motion carries. Good luck. All right, so Coos Bay Radio Discussion, Andrew Jones. You got two tough acts to follow, man. We're getting, we're treated tonight. Wow us.
There's enough for everyone. While those are being passed around. I should have also asked to request out-of-state travel. Skills USA, our radio production team, qualified for nationals again this year in Atlanta, Georgia. Juniors Ava Thomas and Jake Green are hoping to represent us there. So be the second time we've ever competed in this competition there. They won state, when, when you was walking in, when was our state competition? April-ish. We had, say, we had a lot of manufacturing students do very well at the state level, nearly had an overall welder. Make it to nationals as well, but took second. But yeah, so requesting on their behalf. It is June 19th through the 24th. Yeah, yeah. We didn't find out, and this is the first board meeting since we found out. I just forgot to ask out of, but on the agenda.
Well.
We can do a difference. We will be for that. Um, well, I want to know, you probably will need to get ready for this and make accommodations. So how will that work with that? Can we just add this on to ninth or out-of-state travel for?
I.
There's also manufacturing that won nationals. They're not going.
Took second, didn't win. That's a different competition. The Skills USA competition, we took second. Doing great, thanks, man.
But I thought this.
They had state champions in non-national qualifying competitions.
Oh.
So in manufacturing, or at least the welding portion, only two competitions go to nationals, the team fabrication and the all-around welding. Jack Waddington lost on a tiebreaker in the all-around welding, took second. This, the gentleman that won finished fourth place in the nation last year out of Grants Pass. So really tough competition there. Jack did extremely well.
Your board has the authority to amend the agenda and show the ability for these students.
I would like to put that out there, my fellow women, to consider ending the agenda to add the skills to a state team to attend a state of the agenda.
I will make a motion to amend next agenda for these skills USA competition, June 19th through 24th.
Dustin, Kevin, any discussion?
I'm back.
You're back. Did you have some discussion on this?
No, I'm good.
Okay. All right, let's take a vote here. And that was to add that to the agenda or to?
Correct.
Correct. Okay. Everybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now, we've added that to the agenda, and now do you like your emotion?
I'll make a motion to send the. Skills USA, June 19th through 24th.
All right.
Out-of-state to.
Thank you, Dusty.
Hot man is real.
For seconding that. Any discussion on this? All right, so we're gonna actually take a vote here. David, Diane, I, Adrian.
I.
Kevin.
I.
Dustin.
I.
And I, so, oh, oh, gosh, I'm so sorry. I've been missing you every time.
No problem. Aye.
Oh, man, but good, well, there you go.
Appreciate it. And thank you very much. Yeah, sorry, I didn't get that on with everything else. It kind of slipped my mind, so appreciate that. All right, so you've got a package of stuff in front of you. We're gonna work through it. We're gonna, on the agenda that I have there, I'm gonna start with school board's role, because that goes into your first piece of paper. Congratulations, you all own two FCC licensed radio stations and a translator. So if you didn't know that already, you do. What this is, it's the two pages of the, oh, fantastic. These are the two pages of the ownership report that we need your information for. All it's asking is name, address, and then principal profession or occupation. I submit this to our FCC lawyers, and then they handle it. After the last school board election, we didn't get it updated. We're gonna have to do it again after the next one. Every time there's election, we should be, but it's just one of those things that's kind of fallen through the cracks a little bit. So we're trying to get our paperwork. Current with the FCC. So if you've got time just for that today, I can collect it at the end. And that's really all I needed on that one. But again, if at any point you have questions, please just shout them out.
So that's our, our personal address.
Yes.
Is this owned by the school district and we're overseeing it as the board members?
CBD nine school board owns the license to our two radio stations and our translator.
And we always.
Yep, since 1995?
That's right. That's about right. And also, does someone fill?
He's like, could somebody fill it out? I can.
Yes.
Yeah. Do we need an extra? Yes, yeah, I mean, you can just sleep through this. This history portion that's next, you've already got it down. You are the history, so. And the present.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, so that's all it really is. It's just a little bit of paperwork that we have to submit to the FCC. Kim, I might need a signature from, signature from you at some point, sure the current president. I'll shoot you an email, and we can figure that out when we get there. But once I have this information, I'll put it all onto the document, send it to the lawyers, and then they tell me what to do next. So while you're doing that, the packet and this slide show, I'm gonna start to matriculate through maybe. All right, so KMHS has been a part of Marshfield High School for 25 years, where this is our 25th year on the air. As I understand it, in the mid 90s, K-Lite donated our radio station license to the Coos Bay School District. It was for the frequency 1420 AM. The original call letters were not KMHS. They actually belonged to a Coast Guard ship somewhere off the coast of Alaska. And we had to communicate with them in order to get the call letters KMHS because.
They actually moved the ship to the Atlantic, so it couldn't be a K anymore anyway, so.
Perfect. I'm gonna have to, I didn't know that anecdote. Perfect. Yeah, so call letters for radio stations, if you're west of the Mississippi, they all start with a K. If they're east of the Mississippi, they have a W. So that's would be why they needed to change it. So we started as just a commercially licensed AM radio station. Even in the mid to late 90s, AM radio was kind of phasing out. About 2008. Steve Walker, the previous radio station manager and broadcasting instructor at Marshfield, applied for a education license for an FM station. Which is how we got 91.3 FM. When 91.3 FM became ours, you know, we had to get a new antenna on our tower, get a new transmitter. Because AM frequencies and FM frequencies travel differently. We moved our formatting. 91.3 became our pop music station, because it's gonna be more listens to. It's on a better band. You can broadcast in stereo on an FM frequency. And they ran that way till about 2019. In 2019, we have the FCC realizing that AM stations are dying. They allowed. AM radio stations to apply for a translator license. So when I said you own two radio stations and translator, the translator takes an AM frequency. Does something to it and spits it out as an FM frequency as well. So if you go to your car and you go to 1420 AM, you'll hear the exact same thing that's gonna be on 105.1 FM. When we did that, we took 1420 and made it from a classic country station that was mainly playing 40s, 50s, and 60s country music. Since we now have an FM frequency, and we want our students maybe to be a little more involved, we went to what we call a modern country station. We still kept a lot of the old hits. Especially from 70s, 80s, and 90s, and then we roll it in with the current chart toppers. And that's our goal. We were also unable to move all of our sports broadcasting over to 105.1. The reason being it's commercially licensed. I have a slide a little bit later that will break down the difference between an educationally licensed. Radio station and a commercially licensed station. They have very different requirements as to what you can say on the radio. There have been many instances of radio stations being fined when they were educationally licensed and saying things that are technically a commercial. The FCC doesn't like that. So in order to avoid that, we moved our sports over, which did create a little bit of confusion at the time. But it put my mind at ease a little bit. And I think as far as sales go, kind of helped us in that. Making that happen. So I think that's most of that. Moving on. So radio station hierarchy typically works where you have a general manager who's at the top, kind of calling all the shots. Beneath them, sales manager, program director, and engineer. KMHS isn't much different here. We contract out a sales manager who works off of commission. His name is Walt Larson. Our engineer is Robin O'Kelly. He lives, oh, the outskirts of the Eugene area, and every now and then he surfaces to make sure we're up and running. He was actually down last weekend. And then a program director.
Five years.
Oh, yeah, he's been with us since the beginning. Robin O'Kelly was a huge proponent for. Kind of how radio can share ideas, how it should be communal, very for kind of the engineer you kind of want in a school setting. And again, we wouldn't, been a lot of calls when things go off the air, and he's able to, the magic he works, amazing. Program director is taken in our situation mostly by the GM. We do try and give students some responsibility in that role. But it can be difficult when you're programming, everything goes on the radio station. If you don't. Load things in exactly correct, it's gonna throw off our automation system. And so then it falls on me to go figure out why El Guadalajara's new commercial is not playing. Or why, you know, it's pulling a log from three years ago and not the one that should play today. So yeah, those are the types of things we're working on. Below down, this is where we're really able to get students more involved in the production, DJ, and promotion. That's where, kind of at an entry level, they can have a little more say in it. So that's my quick breakdown there. Now, as far as paid employees go though, most radio stations operate with more than just one direct employee, which currently is all KMHS is running with, um, this information comes from around December, uh, when I first put this proposal together. I don't know if K-Doom's employees have changed, but if you go to their website, this is who, uh, they have on there, they have their sales manager, general manager. They have a reception and public affairs director, a morning show host who also handles promotions, their engineer is also a host, and then they have three other workers listed. Um, now, I can't guarantee they're all paid positions, sometimes those radio hosts are people that just wanna get in and, which is I think most of the other three, so I didn't include them on there, but the others are receiving some form of compensation working for the station. For us, we have two independent contractors and myself, um, and then as needed, Robin O'Kelly. We don't, he's not on retainer or anything like that, but as he does work, he bills us, uh, for the service. Uh, Matt Jarvis, who has been broadcasting sports since, I think, Ed Kind did sports for us early on, and then Matt Jarvis kinda took over from Ed. This is Matt's last year, and I don't know that I currently have a suitable replacement, um, at this time. Walt Larson, if you're listening, I apologize if you're age wrong, but I wanna say early seventies. Same with Robin O'Kelly, uh, so I do have an aging workforce, uh, as far as people that have been helping keep the station together since before my time, uh, have been all gracious and stayed with me, so that's been very good, um. The next, like, ten pages are just kind of a breakdown of the different duties you saw in that hierarchy, I'm not gonna go through them all because I feel bad for them, um, but I kinda broke it down so that on one side you have kind of a generic definition of what a general manager should do in a radio station, and then how it looks at KMHS, sales manager, same situation, this is what a director of sales would do in a non-KMHS radio station, how we've made it work here, same operations, on-air staff, engineering, accounting, administrative assistant reception, do, 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 um, and then you get to a page that says teaching broadcast journalism, so on top of all of the duties and responsibilities of running a two radio stations and a translator that operate twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, or at least that's what we go for. Sometimes weather knocks us off, um, I'm also teaching five course or six periods a day with five different preps throughout that day, um. All curriculum for these courses were developed, uh, and collected by the instructors, Steve Walker gave me a really good start, but things needed to be modernized, updated as far as new technology was coming in, new trends in radio, um, and also just a new person, you kinda gotta do things your own way once your, your feet settled under you. Um, so that's just kind of a breakdown of how my course schedule looks like. Uh, day to day, trying to teach radio. Things just moving, I don't know, it's not. Close structures, alright. There we go, um, get ready for me when I come in, get everything unlocked, try and get things settled, hopefully there's no immediate issues with the radio station. Uh, and get ready for my first class of the day, um, as the day goes though, what's different than my previous teaching experience as a social studies teacher, uh, I get interrupted often with radio business, um, and it could be as simple as, you know, or somebody letting me know a song is not appropriate, I get that occasionally, um, it could be we went off the air, could be yeah, you know, the phone ring, if I've gotta answer it, could be my sales manager needing some information so that we can continue making sales to help fund the station. Um, it does make it difficult to get a flow in the classroom and to direct instruction as, as I feel it should be done appropriately. Um, but yeah, so then I was trying to break down typical day for a manager, some of the conflicts that I was just mentioning, and then this here, our commercial license versus education license, I talked about that a little bit earlier, um, on a non-commercial radio sta- station, you cannot use any language that, um, is quantitative, so we can't talk about, you know, this company has the greatest selection of a product, we can't, uh, talk about quality, we can't say they've got the best, the greatest, the most, um, we can't give call to action, we can't tell anybody to go down to that business, down to that company. Um, and I feel there's a fourth thing we can't do that's escaping me, but I'll ask my intro students tomorrow and I'm sure they'll be able to tell me. Um, but we, we're very restricted on ninety-one three and what we're allowed to say, uh, which it does make me a little bit nervous sometimes when we're trying to figure out what responsibilities we can give to a student if they accidentally put a commercial on the wrong station, which does happen occasionally, hasn't bitten us yet, but that can lead to fines. There's an example, uh, in your document of a a radio station in Michigan who they were taking a feed for a football game, the feed they were taking was from a commercial station, they were supposed to, every time it goes to a commercial break, turn the volume down on the, where they were taking the feed from and turn it up on their studio so they could run their own spots. They failed to do that and after some back and forth with the FCC, they still had to pay seventeen thousand five hundred dollars in fines. So, that is the reality of what I'm looking at, when I'm trying to manage the stations, trying to figure out, you know, what is a responsibility for the general manager, what's the responsibility of a student, what's gonna lead to a seventeen thousand dollar fine? And what is not, um, and, uh, the current SDD contract that is tied to the radio station is made up for seventy days, uh, seventy-eight hour days, which would cover the summer, spring break, Christmas break, those random weekends where I have to go in and fix something, and if Robin O'Kelly tells me he's gonna be down on Saturday to fix something at the trans, at the tower site on a transmitter, I'm gonna go with Robin O'Kelly to the transmitter to make sure everything gets fixed and so that I know how to troubleshoot if anything goes wrong in the future, because as he has told me numerous times, that thing can shock me and it won't feel good, and he knows that from experience, he tells me, and his hair makes me believe him, um. So, and even like anything I do after, after three forty in a day, so if I put in one extra hour a day over the course of the school year, I'm looking at twenty-three days off that contract, which are days that aren't gonna be covered, but it's also work I can't put off. I put it off, bad things could happen, um, and so again, I'm just trying to bring awareness that everything goes on the station, 'cause I, in seven years have never been I've never asked to come here, I've never been asked to come here and I just didn't know, wanna make sure everybody's aware of what's going on in our building. Um, so KMHS are funding, I've talked about, we have a sales manager, uh, it's Walt Larson, graduate of Marshfield sometime when it was first built, and I really hope he's not listening to any of you for that, um, we're not funded directly by the school, my salary, that SDD contract, that all does come to me, but all the equipment we purchased, paying Robin to come and work on a couple, a couple of projects he's working on right now, uh, that comes out of our club account, which is, um, lifted up by our sponsors, as of, we did billing on Friday, we have fifty-seven active sponsors at the moment. Uh, fluctuates, couple up and down, I think we've been as high as sixty-four, sixty-five. Uh, where it gets kinda murky is with our, um, sales packages, which if you're curious, your very back page has what we currently charge and the different packages we offer, it's separate from the document, um, in there, we are oh yeah, so again, our people, they, they fluctuate, they kinda come and go, um, our sports, which is something that draws a lot of interest, uh, we don't charge for it, we include it in our booster packages, so a bronze booster would also get sports in there, um, which does help us keep it, now the downside, we have, we have an obligation to play every sponsor that pay, that gets that package within a sporting contest and when a, you know, baseball game is a blowout, it's really hard to cram them all in or when Coach Miles and Answorth don't call timeouts during basketball games, it really makes it tough, but we do our best, we try and get there, we also are funded through Carl Perkins Grant and career pathways, those have been huge for us, especially as we've tried to modernize and update the radio station over the past few years. This is, uh, for the past six years, I was able to get our, uh, ra- radio finances, so this is six years since I've been in charge. Typically, we profit or very close, you'll notice in the seventeen eighteen year, we do have a large loss, that was the year we got the translator. So, having to, you know, Robin will do a lot of things, but he won't climb the tower for some reason, so we had to hire another aid group to come out. Somebody who's certified to climb the tower, someone willing to ensure that guy, uh, so it got pretty expensive, we also had to get more equipment to put at, at our transmitter site, um, and at the radio station and to receive and send those signals. Uh, so that was, I think, thirty thousand dollar loss just to get the new translator up, but I do think it has led to maybe a little easier to get sponsors, we have two FM stations, our demographic and area catch music does well. So it's been a positive move, I think in the long term, it does pay for itself, um, but, you know, time will tell, um, and then last year, we had a small loss, uh, we were coming out of, you know, the COVID pandemic. We did pretty well, but some of those costs that I didn't have when students are around, I, I, I would say I maybe didn't budget as well, and then we had more students qualify for Skills USA Nationals ever, we took seven total people between two advisors and five computing students, um, and so that cost a little bit more, and so it wasn't a huge loss, but a little bit, every other year though, we've made money, our account uh, last time I looked at it, had around thirty thousand dollars in it. Um, it's probably where I feel comfortable and I feel it should maintain, um, be in the twenty to thirty thousand range at least. If our transmitter goes out completely, we're looking at a really expensive fix just for the transmitter that doesn't include shipping, that doesn't include trying to get it out to the transmitter site, which is on a Port of Cuzbay property in the east side, um, it's, can be tough to get to, uh, and with something as fragile as a transmitter, I'd be very careful with all of that, and then somebody to install it, set it up and all those things, uh, again, it gets really expensive trying to maintain these, we've been very fortunate um, to keep things up and running. Do, 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 and the equipment cost, what I talked about, I forgot to move over a slide, my apologies. Uh, there are some areas to grow in KMHS, some things that I would like to see us do that we've tried to, but what it really comes down to is not enough adult help, um, manpower from somebody who's there regularly uh, can be there for the, you know, the long term. When you're dealing with student workers, you probably have less than a two-year chance at their employment, if you include training, when we really only have less than an hour most days, it takes a while for them to get comfortable doing all the things they have to do. It's also talking about employees that don't have any real frame of reference working in the radio industry, this is their first experience, you're gonna have a lot more mistakes than if say we were hiring somebody from K-Doom to come and assist us, they would at least have some frame of reference, understand the terminology, and have a better understanding of what's going. So when trying to get, and then also, you know, that turnover, two years, the most you're ever gonna get out of an employee, two to three. Three's like really lucky, we're always very fortunate, we have those, I have two, three-year employees who will be leaving, but again, my time has been average one to two. Uh, I would like to see us do some more podcasting, um, not, I mean, radio stations nationwide are picking up on this more. Every year I try and go to the National Association of Broadcasters Convention, and there's always more and more ways radio stations are incorporating bro- our podcasting into their operation, but it does take time to produce, upload and maintain, just like with anything, if you are not uploading regularly, you don't have an audience, you lose them. Um, and so we've tried to do things in the past, that the consistency is where that issue was, students do still need someone to help guide them to hold them accountable and keep them consistent, and if the radio station's profitability is centered around what we're currently doing, that's kinda where I have to hedge my time. Uh, KMHS News, uh, it would be nice to get more to our parents, to our community of things happening district-wide, it doesn't have to relate just to Marshfield, it would be nice to do more, but I do know that I, I don't have the time to compile all of that at the time to make radio spots, podcasts and social media posts centered around that, we would be a great outlet for it and to get students involved in that process would be fantastic, but just the time isn't there, our video production, we've got our YouTube channel, there's a lot we can do there, and tying to that, I'd also have our live streaming on our DJs would be great, streaming videos, kids get really excited, we partner with a company called Sports Casting Unlimited for the three A basketball tournaments. Um, it started out pretty small, they would take one or two of our students and kinda have them run a camera, but they wouldn't use it too often. This last year, at any given game, we had four to five students working within their operation. Uh, students were paid a small stipend for doing it, they gained a lot of experience, and I got a lot of students really hooked based off of that, the downside, we cannot currently stream any events live in the main gym or the football stadium because of the NFHS cameras that were purchased in twenty, not purchased, that were I don't know how to least, thank you, leased in twenty twenty, um, at the time, I did say that long-term, I sent an email out to stakeholders at the time, and I was not in favor of that because it did, was gonna restrict what we could do long-term. We've been trying to build up the hardware in order to get things online and again consistently, um, and we weren't really allowed to get to that point, uh, we've been at a bit of a standstill on that since the spring of twenty twenty. Yes.
Is that because of a, a licensing issue or something similar between the district and NFHS, or is it just an equipment and cost issue?
The contract signed with the NFHS and Play On Sports says, uh, because they, they want to make money off of it, just like you know, most people they do, so they charged, at the time, it was ten ninety-nine a month or seventy dollars a year to use their service. Uh, and I do, the, they were leased, they were giving you the camera for free. Um, but you would kinda pay them back through those subscriptions, if our school has enough subscribers, we do get a little bit of a kickback, I don't know if the numbers ever got to that point, that's outside of my pay grade. But that was kinda their operation model, is they want the cameras in the gyms. Um, and I do believe they were trying to do a good thing, twenty twenty, the pandemic, so that nobody could go into an arena or, you know, they couldn't see, so they wanted people to see, I, it wasn't just about money for them, but what it did do is it tied us to them, um, launch, every year we keep it, it's the same process, we're still charging our community for some, uh, uh, service we could probably provide on YouTube uh, for free. Uh, and even run it in a similar model where we get advertisers like we've done for the radio station, I think the, there's, there's something there and there's a possibility, I do know Kokil School District just decided that next year they will be streaming all of their home, as many home sporting events as they can, I think, like, I don't wanna misquote, but they have hired a tech one to make sure the tech side's all taken for them, uh, the individual will work from one to nine and running the technical side to make sure cameras are set up, the stream is up and healthy, and also with their radio station, KRWL, they are expanding their radio broadcast coverage, uh, going into next year. Um, but yeah, it, it did start out as, again, I think they meant well, but on the contract you are stuck with it, and I think if you want to stop using them, they require you to have one of their technicians come uninstall the camera and take it back, at least that's what I read at the time, I can't say I stayed up on that since twenty twenty.
You know the length of those contracts?
So you're, it was a, I wanna say a three-year NIFA contract that then is rolled over every year until it's canceled. I think so, yeah, so I never was privy to the one that we signed, I was able to find two other contracts signed around the same time by the districts and they had the exact same language in there, uh, right, yep, they keep you in there. That's right, again, I, I don't know that, I, I think it was a smart business move, 'cause they've been pushing those cameras when I go to that National Association of Broadcasters uh, convention, they always had a booth, they're always trying to push them, but they were also charging every time for the camera and installation. And then they were talking like such a big upfront cost that you could, you know, just take one camera and hook it up to a computer, do a YouTube stream, it would have been just as good, um, the upside of the cameras, they are self-automated. It does get frustrating sometimes, 'cause if you're watching a soccer game and the goalie on the far end moves the ball, it's gonna go all the way over here, and then you're not gonna see how Mara scored on Cottage Grove, and then they'll celebrate and it'll go back. So, that's just personal frustration from when I was coaching soccer, so sorry, I'll, I'll let it go someday. Alright, yeah, so that was just one of the areas, so I think there's a lot of potential growth for KMHS, there's a lot we can do with our media and how we can better help our community and the district as a whole, right now KMHS has really been just with the high school, it's been Our community and the district as a whole. Right now KMHS has really been just with the high school. It's been at the whim of. Whoever the instructor is of the program. But right now there is one person trying to manage two different radio stations with two different sets of requirements. When KMHS was started, it was one AM radio station. Um, that I've am told it did struggle a bit financially early on to get going, to get its. Client list up, to get the sponsor level where it needed to be. Uh, once ninety-one-three came about, we were able to do that, but now we also have two stations. And since then, the work is, it gets more and more every year. Currently, that same person is teaching six classrooms today with five preps, relying heavily on student workers, which does lead to a lot of errors and a high turnover rate. And every time there's an error. It's on the GM to go back and fix it. I've got a list a mile long that I need to start knocking out tomorrow or yesterday. Um, the physical space at KMHS isn't really suitable for much expansion either. Uh, we do need more recording space. We're operating with class sizes in the twenties, uh, at times and only two rooms for recording. Uh, in the building, which does make it tough to keep students engaged when they're not able to get in and out of recording space. And if we wanted to expand it to do more, doing more podcasting or. Even music production, but that I just, we don't need any more bad SoundCloud rappers, but, um, we could start offering that with maybe a little more space. Uh, we could use a dedicated television studio. The KMHS Daily Announcements is done out of a corner of the classroom at the, the moment in time. We've tried it in separate rooms in the building, but now I'm stretched between two spaces. And if something goes wrong at the radio station and I'm in the main building, it leads to a bit of an issue and that had happened, which is part of the reason why we. Brought it back into, um, our radio space. Our two radio stations currently operate out of the same studio, so our country station and our current hit station are in the same room. You typically want them into several rooms that you could have a live person on the air on both at the same time. We don't have that ability right now. We are working on that. That was one of the projects Robin's hoping to knock out this summer. Um, he had been worried he had a heart attack in the fall, um, but he seems to have recovered. He's moving again. Uh, so he'll at least be able to get this one last summer of projects, but I honestly don't know how much longer we were gonna have Robin O'Kelly to do the heavy lifting here. Um, and currently our doors don't close very well. Um, that's just a large frustration. Uh, so the building's not even, as we'll see in a slide or two. These are some pictures of the building, some problem areas. I've had issues with getting things, uh, even when I put in work orders, the timeliness on getting things. Fixed hasn't been there. Um, that light that is coming through, uh, the ceiling. I've had a work order for that for at least three months and I'm going conservative because I don't wanna be wrong here, but it was quite a while ago. Um, and that sits over a student, um, if I have a full class. Um, we had a similar issue with a light fixture in the on-air room two years ago and it was, it took a long time to get somebody in there and, you know. How to take it to get pulling on it or something. Our front steps look pretty weathered. I don't know how much longer those boards are gonna hold up. Uh, nobody's gone through yet, but also no one's gone through the floor of our building. The ceiling, that place has been that patch, I've been redone three, four or five times and it keeps having issues right now. It's really brittle. I'm afraid to touch it. Um, there's already one hole in it. Uh, I don't know what is gonna come of that. And our floor, I put a level on the floor and, uh, the, the little bubble goes all the way over. Uh, it's extremely uneven. This was a relocatable that I think has been standing there since the seventies, uh, that they. Took out like a doorway to make it seem like one building, but it hasn't received any structural upgrades. Um, it's not doing well and it's one of the things that's gonna hold us back from being able to expand is trying to run everything out of this. Building where the floors become more uneven every year. Every now and then the floor and the exterior wall. Come apart and a vinyl grow through and then three months later someone will come and board it up. Um, so. That is a huge concern. It's something that I've brought up from day one. Since I got there, I was always told there, oh, we're working on something, there's something and then. Seven years later, there's still nothing. Um, and so maybe I should have pushed harder, should have done something like this earlier, but. Here I am, there it is. Um, and then that's just pictures backside of the building. There was a hole. I felt like I needed five pictures up there, so there's five. So some of the concerns, building. Teacher, station manager coverage, really difficult to do both things at the same time. Uh, and also the teacher, station manager balance. When that issue comes up with the radio station, but I'm supposed to be directing students, what do I do? Um, as a self-funded program, we don't have the program without the radio station, but also the station's supposed to be there for the students. So which do I neglect? And that is a tough thing and I've tried it both ways. I've tried to put the station first, tried to put the kids first and man. It is not fun, uh, to have to make that decision. Um, you know, I. Not many people come and check out the station. Not many people, I don't know what the interest really is there from. I mean, again, we have fifty-seven sponsors, so I feel like the community's got some interest, uh, in it, but. The amount of time that goes by without somebody who isn't a student in my class myself that comes by, it's, it's few and far between. And also I do have to miss class time for radio business. The NIV holds their conference the middle of the spring for a week. And so I missed that time. That's time away from the classroom, but it's also been invaluable to my development. I was hired as a social studies teacher that took. Three years of radio from two thousand two to two thousand six and then didn't do much else with it in that time. Um, I had a lot of catching up to do without going and covering things like the state basketball tournaments, state tennis the one time. That was fun. Um, and going to the National Association of Broadcasters Convention, I wouldn't have been able to pick up, um, the tools I need to do. At least the radio side of the job well, but I do miss a lot of class time for radio. Um, and sometimes video specific things and that hurts the student learning experience. It hurts my student retention. And when I don't retain the student for three years, uh, we also lose grant funding to the, uh, career pathways grant. And also burnout. I'm tired. It's okay. Uh, so that's, that's a big one. So. That's where I'm at. Let me double check that I covered everything. So I don't know that I have a great solution for what we should do going forward, but these are my concerns, a little bit of history. And again, that stapled packet has more detailed information. I feel like I've eaten up a good chunk of time, so I, and any questions, I'm more than happy to answer and. I could be reached, email, stop by the station. I'll be there all week.
True. Are these the doing rates currently?
That's current, currently what we're charging, yes. Yep. Uh, we do have, our Skills USA students are fundraising, so they're fundraisers to sell summer advertising. So not listed on there is a graduation package. You'll get, uh, at least one play a day promoting, saying, hey, thank you graduates. For, you know, graduating and, uh, yeah, that's what we're doing there.
Are they similar to other stations?
To my knowledge, uh, usually you don't necessarily want your competition to know exactly what you're. Selling, um, but at one point I was able to get a sheet, I think, from Bi-Cosal Media and we were fairly comparable. Um, some of the differences, we don't, uh, do. Some radio stations will sell specific, like, uh, we'll play between three and six prime drive times, right? They'll do drive time sales. We just kinda go flat. Let the automation system pick it, um, because of our limitations and restrictions. We wouldn't be able to keep up. If we promised that and we wanna be able to deliver on what we have to promise. Um, the other thing is. What we're able to, like. It'd be hard for us to have Seven Devils as a sponsor because their biggest export would be an alcoholic beverage, which. Is not something we feel we can promote and I'm sure you would probably agree. If I can, just tell me. Uh, and also for a while, the marijuana shops in the area were big on some other radio stations. That's a market we just can't tap. Um, so, you know, slightly different, uh, but also corporate broadcasting may bundle things a little bit differently. We're a single entity and we're one of Bi-Cosal just bought up another station a couple of weeks ago, so. It's becoming more and more corporate radio in our area.
This is a lot of information and I had no idea about, I just, I listen to it every day. I've, I also have kids and they, each one of them has the different station. I get country all the time from my son and. The current hits on ninety-one point three from the rest of my kids, so I just thought it just went. I did not know all of this and that's usually, there's always this, uh, you know, underlying foundation that's set up by people and then maintained and. And so when you said burnout, I, I, I laughed because, yeah, I could, I could feel it from your presentation and how much that you're doing. So thank you for all you've put in for the students. And so you were, you were a social studies teacher and now you're all radio?
Yeah, so I wanted to play soccer for some reason and it, I got one offer and it was in North Dakota. So I moved to North Dakota, uh, and so I got my bachelors. And I started teaching there, first job. So I did two years teaching in social studies in Oaks, North Dakota. Um, and then Steve Walker and I had stayed in touch. Um, actually I had been back for a break for some reason. And Ron Nance, who does a lot of our, our girl sports, uh, especially volleyball. We had, uh, lunch together and he told me to email Steve because I said I was, you know. Probably moving back. I was tired of snow. It's really high there. It's cold. Um. And he said, email Steve, you know, he, you know, he might wanna see us. I said, hey, Steve, come back. He said, hey, you want a job? And he told me he was retiring and I applied and I got it then.
So now, yeah, so then you're radio all, all the way.
All the way.
Okay, thank you.
I do still have a social studies license, but yes, radio. Rock and all.
I appreciate this presentation and.
I'd like to also give kudos. Um, I'm, my wife has caught me standing with the single radio antenna that's still up in our house and, you know. While I'm touching the aluminum windows. Um, and listening to the developing voice of Ron and Matt, uh, Friday night or Thursday night. Um, so kudos. I think it is a. Jump in the community that, uh, kind of brings people together.
Absolutely. That Dustin nailed that because I can't imagine what our community would do without these stations. And it's been such, I mean, Arnie can attest to this too. Are you still there? I figured you want something.
I am still here.
Your connection's not so good, Arnie, but I could pick up something about the first tower. Yeah.
The, the first tower was. It got hit by lightning. It was.
Yes, that's right.
Striking. That's when I found out we didn't own the tower, which was really good.
Right. It was like, please before, right?
They had, no, the radio station had forgotten to give it to us. They thought they had, but they hadn't, so. It ended up being their problem and we got a new tower out on the spoils. So it was about well for us.
Which actually on the new test, speaking of lightning, our, our new tower was also struck by lightning. It happens often, Mark, you think for radio towers. But we do have a damaged antenna and a cable. It's another project Robin's working on. We should, so if you ever go off. It's because the cable, it's windy, the cable's being pushed, it's like disconnecting us. So fingers crossed that, uh, we can get somebody willing to climb up there safely. Before it happens. But yeah, lightning is a thing.
Lightning, fun. Okay, so do we have any other questions? Nope. Okay, and so we will get ahold of you through email and or phone if we have any other questions and if we wanna visit. I've been there before. I can attest to some of those. I thought the floor was, I was, yeah.
I don't know, Kevin Willheim and I were the same height at one point in that building, so. I've never looked him right in the eyes, but that, two weeks ago.
Alright. I have my come visit over there. Check it out.
I'll show you the spots, be tall. It's, it's fun.
Yeah, brand. Alright, thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Uh, if you have the papers that are filled out, I'll come.
Oh, yes. Yes. We're owners now. I didn't see a place to sign, so. There is, was there a place to sign on that? Alright. Well, thank you. Oh, you still found his out. Okay, so moving right along, OSEA, Barbara.
Hi. Okay, so we had board nominations. And our entire board was unopposed. And so I will be introducing them tonight. Um, I am stepping down from the board. Uh, I will stay on as like a mentor-y person. I'm student teaching next year. And I can't do both things at one time.
Congratulations.
Thanks. Um, so I am taking a backseat and I trust that, um. Our people will be able to do some great things. So I'm gonna have them come up. And they can introduce themselves. Some of them, you know, most of them, you have to get up.
So this is Shelly. And we are hospitality.
I'm Brenda Guesberg. I'm the treasurer.
I'm Bree Landrum and I'm gonna be the new president. So trying to fill Barbara's shoes.
Congratulations.
And I'm Terry Jones, related to Drew, and I will be the, um, chapter secretary.
Oh, nice.
I'm Loma Laney and I will be the vice president.
Congratulations, everyone. It's, it's wonderful to meet the team. Some, some returning face, face, and then some new people here, right?
Yes, our board is relatively new. Um, Loma and Bree are gonna go up to conference. And they're going to do some leadership and some celebration classes on how to celebrate our people and. Um, do some leadership stuff and then all the other logistics of unique things. Uh, so they're excited and we're excited to send them, um. Do you guys wanna say anything? So it technically won't happen until September.
Okay.
So Bree, I will still be here next month.
Okay.
And Bree will take over in the fall. Um, because we have to get everybody swarming and all of that good stuff. Uh, so it'll be in September.
You wanna do a practice run, Bree, with her next time? You could co-present?
Yeah, sure. I could ask her if I was presenting tonight and she said, no, I'm talking. And then she said, she had to run out for a minute. So if it started before she got back, and I was like, but what am I talking about?
It was a test and you passed.
Sure, we'd like to practice hospitality. I like donuts.
Oh, I know, right?
Not tonight. Fraser's is too far away. They probably closed.
Um, I do wanna give an update on Tierman. Um, so I knew her to my office, if you guys didn't know that, and I, last time I spoke to her. He was transferred to the pediatric, um, rehab facility up in Portland. They only have six. Uh, kids up there right now, so he'll get a lot of one-on-one. Um, he was able to sit up on his own. He's able to move his arms, the dexterity and like the fine motor skills are not quite there, but he can hold on to stuff. And he is able to move his right leg. All four muscle groups are working. They're just super weak. And then he's still working on the left side of his body, but improvement, um, and we're all very happy to hear that. So any good bags you're sending out, keep sending them. Um, I know that Sonia appreciates it and we were able to get her lots of sick leave. Our unit did amazing. Um, and she's out until June-ish, um, so, yeah.
Thank you for that update and definitely from all of us here on the board. Send, send them our love and healing thoughts for sure, so. Oh my goodness, it's such a hard thing to go through.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you for that update, though.
Yeah, that is what I have. I'm going to go home.
Kids in the car?
Uh, they're actually in the front section. My son was playing T-ball, my daughter was doing soccer and it's. Yeah, another reason why I can't also do this and.
I getcha. I totally understand. There'll be a time.
Yes, absolutely. So, alright, thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Alright, moving on to CBEA and Jeremy. There you are.
Uh, hi there. Um, a really quick update here. Um, so we got some state testing going on right now, so that's occupying a lot of our time. Otherwise, I think a lot of educators are just kinda feeling the whole, like, we're almost done with things, but I know state testing is kinda occupying some of their time. Um, bargaining, we are gonna meet again Tuesday the sixteenth. I think we're making a lot of progress. I feel pretty optimistic about things. There are still a couple of points. There are still a couple of points that we're just agreeing on. Um, but I know Monday, uh, next Tuesday, the 16th is going to be our next time together. Uh, CBA is going to be presenting their proposal and generally feel pretty good about things. I'm in a pretty good place with that. Um. Last, not last, yeah, last Monday, May 1st was, uh, Principal's Day. Um, we did a nice thing for Mr. Ashton because as a couple of people said earlier, we're big fans of his and stuff. So, um, that was a nice day. Uh, this week is Teacher Appreciation Week, which I gather is probably going to mean that we're going to get flooded with food and stuff, but that's okay. Uh, specifically during Teacher Appreciation Week on Wednesday afternoon in Heritage Hall, we're going to be having the education celebration. And of course, all of you all are invited to stop by and take part in that. We'll, um, honor our probationary members who are graduating from probation. We will honor a couple of members who are retiring. And then we always do this thing called the Extra Mile Award. It's a nice little kind of nomination that we give to members that we feel are going the extra mile and stuff like that. So there'll be food, there'll be music, there'll be a whole lot of teachers all kind of hanging out and venting a little bit, but.
I'll be there.
Okay, sounds great.
Do we need to bring food?
Oh, God, no, no.
Okay.
I mean, I remember last year when we did it, I brought the food and we ended up with tons of leftovers. So I assume that the committee who's handling that this year will suffice, yeah. Any questions or anything like that? Awesome.
Happy Tuesday.
Thank you. I'll see some of you all Wednesday then.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so business office. Yes.
All right. Um, I will be through here. Uh, April, I need to report. The first page is the state expenditure and expenditures and change of the fund balance. Uh, as of April 30th, the general fund had a balance of 12.2 million. Um, as of the same date, uh, we had about $8 million in income that was remaining. Um, that is salary due January 30th and some maintenance items, some supplies. Um, but, uh, what this report does not show is, um, our final state school fund payment, which we received in May. And, um, our final, uh, property tax revenue. So. Um, we will be keeping a close eye on this as we enter the next budget. Um. Special revenue. Uh, was it $2 million? Um. Typically, this time of the year, we see this be in the red because, uh, we will start billing for these reimbursable grants. Um, the reason it is not, if you compare this to prior years, is because, uh, a scholarship fund has such a large balance, so it's still showing in the black here. Um. And there's been a change in the way that we submit, uh, claims to O D E. Most of them are on a quarterly basis now and followed by some quarterly reports. Whereas, um, in the past, I was just submitting claims monthly and that's not the way most of these grants are working now. So. Um, I just wanted to point that out. Um, our debt service fund had a balance of 2.6 million. Um. And the reason that this has a balance, uh, a large balance is because, um, our bond payments are due in June. So we're, we're continuing to grow this. We'll, we'll pay out most of this in June. Capital projects, we're getting down to the nitty gritty with our, um, bond dollars. The balance was 8.7. Um, about at this time, $4 million of it was bond money. Um, we're getting ready to make our final payment to Scott Hurdney for Madison. And we've started construction with Scott Hurdney again at Melacoma. Um, so. This will lead me into my conversation when we get to the resolution, um, a little bit later. Uh, but. We are quickly getting down to the, the last of our bond funds. Any questions on this page? Um, we can take a look at our expenditures by object. Um, and this gives you a snapshot of how we are spending general fund dollars. Um, there's not really a whole, a whole lot of change from, from last month. Um, I do want to point out. 111 and 112, um, is a little bit higher than what we had budgeted. And that is because, um, we had some federal grants that we moved some salaries into to get spent by the deadlines of those. So that's why we had it originally budgeted, but it's not. Um, I did, uh, find out that our insurance and judgment, which is, um, object 615. Um, our insurance is just through pace for our, our property and general liability. Um, and they are anticipating an increase of between 15 to 20%. Um, for next year. So that was lovely information that they shared with me. Um. So we will be anxiously awaiting our bill for that to see what that comes to add. Uh, any questions on the financials? If not, we can take a look at our enrollment as of main board. Um, if you look at the bottom of the page, you can see that our enrollment has increased by four since last month. Um. And really overall, it is, it has been pretty steady. Um, not any real significant changes to point out. We did, um, get our final, uh, state school fund estimate for 21, 22. Um. And just to quickly recap that, uh, this is where I talk about, we're always working within three years. We're waiting for the prior year to reconcile. We're in the current year and we're building a budget for next year. Um, so our final school payment for this year will have our reconciliation for last year in it. Um, and they reduced, they will be reducing our payment by 507,000 dollars. And that's due to enrollment figures, um, A D M, all of the weights, the populations. Um, taking a look at our transportation expenses or, um, uh, years of experience for our licensed staff, all of those things calculate into that prior year. So. There's that.
But the majority of the enrollment change, I would assume.
For the 21, 22 year. Any questions on that?
All right. Thank you, Candace, and. Karras, you're up.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I know we have a quite packed agenda. So I'm just going to focus my update on some quick celebrations. Because this is the time of year where, um, there are a lot of formal national celebrations. To take a moment to, uh, to express our deep, uh, gratitude and appreciation for our incredible staff. As we've heard already, uh, this evening, this week is National Teacher Appreciation Week. Um, and we cannot do enough to support our amazing licensed staff. Um, what they do, I mean, we heard one licensed staff member tonight going above and beyond. Um, the incredible things are, uh, all of our licensed staff do. So I deep thank you to them. We also mentioned, um, uh, May 1st was National Principal's Day. So big shout out to our really incredible principals and all that they're doing. Um, they are superheroes with the help, uh, but they, uh, every day, uh, uh, all your responsibilities that you have, it, it's really amazing and impressive. Um, on April 26th, it was National Administrative Professional Day. So. Thank you, David, here and all of our administrative professionals, uh, uh, support staff around the district. Uh. Yeah, we couldn't operate without them at all. Um. We also last week had National Lunch Heroes Day. So all of our nutrition service workers, the great work they do. Uh, making sure that our students are fed and, um, uh, cared for and nurtured and the great job they do. Um, and this Wednesday is National School Nurse Day on Wednesday. So, uh, super shout out to our nurses. Uh, I think COVID has only further spotlighted how important our school nurses are and all that they do. I got an email today that they are the most requested staff on a daily basis that students want to speak to. They're, uh, doing an incredible job. Um, I also want to thank the board and many of our staff members for attending the Spring Tea fundraiser for the Goose Bay Schools, uh, uh, Schools Community, Schools Foundation, Schools Community Foundation. Last Wednesday, um, it was a wonderful event and we spotlighted our incredibly talented students. That was the highlight. They were we have some deep talent, um, our students. And, uh, I was told that that was the largest fundraiser. Our community is so generous and so supportive and it was such a wonderful, feel-good event. So thank you all. And thank you particularly to the Goose Bay Schools Community Foundation for all that you're doing to provide extras for our teacherhood and our students. Um, that support was evident in the beautiful student artwork and the beautiful, the incredible student performances. Um, we're nearing the end of our spring sports. I was hoping that Carly would be here to give you all updates, but just we have so many spring sports. We're moving on to state tournaments. Um, golf, our equestrian team is amazing. Both of the boys and girls golf teams qualified. Track is coming up. We're preparing for the big district meet coming up. Um. Uh, also tennis has their districts this week. Softball team is heading to the postseason. Our boys baseball team, well, they won their first district game last week. They're working hard. Um, our speech and debate team continues to be among the best in Oregon. As we heard, we have two students going, uh, to nationals. We, uh, placed third overall. So thank you, Coach Kayla. Okay, so you're sitting there. Um, yeah. You have a fantastic team and thank you for the great work you do and I hope you have fun in Atlanta. Um, and then also our C T E teachers, we've seen a little sneak peek about how amazing. They took, um, the manufacturing structure, uh, Landkrupp is sitting right back here. And, uh, Andrew Jones, they took the group of, well-known, Andrew Post. I was getting this wrong.
Post, I wasn't able to go, so.
But it's your student.
Took my student. He reps me. We're going to Andrew. We look the same.
Well, you had to run the radio station.
So the C T E manufacturing program has three state champions that I just found out. They were not qualifying and that's for nationals. But we have three state champs. Um, and, uh, what Brady Shaw and Stormy Osborne shared a title in safety participation. And White Cherry won a state title in welding. So that's pretty amazing. In broadcaster journalism, you heard and voted on early, earlier with Elizabeth Delgado and Ava Thomas. Um, teamed together to win the state title, title in audio and radio production. And they will be now going to Atlanta in June. So we have so many amazing things going on. Um, I also want to mention Thursday night is Spring Band Concert. So folks want to go see the Spring Band Concert. And we have a big birthday coming up for our board chair. Um, it's a big one. Can I reveal the big?
Yeah.
Big five-oh for Ken Rick coming up, so.
Happy in the house. And also, here's the 50 birthday.
I wish 50 plus.
Since Carly wasn't here, a couple of things. So, um, the other thing, choir, um, our choir, concert choir, um, qualified for state for the first time in five years here in the districts. And they competed last week, um, and did well. Um, and then, um, we do have a couple of events. We have our scholarship assembly for some of the 17th. You guys are all welcome to come. It's a great event. Um, well, I think we're up to about $400,000 that will be given out to students. Um, and then we have our end of the year awards, um, night, which is May 31st. Uh, that's in the always party at 5:30. Um, and then the following night, it's June 1st is our end of the year choir. So we have band this Thursday and choir.
Um, can we get those dates for data to maybe send it out so we can get it on all of our calendars? Those are amazing events. I'm looking forward to them. Thank you for all you, you almost, yeah, busy time of the year.
Always.
But great celebrations.
Yeah, it's nice to be celebrating some things.
Yeah.
So thank you, Eli, and thank you, Kayla, for being a principal as well and, and taking our students to, it's uh, Arizona, right? You're going to Arizona and then the other kids are going to Atlanta. Wow, both hot places. All right. So moving on to board member highlights, we've got, in just one to two words, board member highlights. What can we highlight? Uh, Karras pointed out that a few of us went to the Spring Tea. Was it last Wednesday? I thought it was Friday. Oh my goodness, I don't know where the time's gone, but that was amazing. Uh, Arnie was, uh, an award recipient and, um, so was Caddy and, and it just made me clamped. And we also had the students perform and it was I'm just shocked. I'm in awe of all, all the things from a second grader playing Beethoven. Which one would he, Burley's? And to the dance and then the opera. What was, what did she sing? I don't know. It was in Italian. Adrian knows.
I was there. Unfortunately, I had to leave after, um, had to receive your award because I had an E S D Budget Committee meeting, so.
It was amazing. You missed a lot. I don't want to rub it in, but it was so good. And the silent auction, which I'm addicted to. I love those silent auctions. So I won a couple of things. I'm not going to call myself a winner, but that just happened. Yes, and Candace. It's for a good cause. That's what I tell my husband. So, and I got to visit, um, Mr. Kirk's class, even though he wasn't there. And I went to visit destinations and you weren't there. I just time it like that, so you guys aren't there. But I am going to go, get to go visit those again so I can get a tour of your shop, which is amazing. And I didn't even know was under the school in the basement area in a dark corner. So I'm going to get to go see that and see Elath. Who wants to go next?
Well, I was on vacation for most of the last. Did go and do the, uh, go to the dinner high and give out the appreciation to the board. Really enjoyable to, uh, to say hi and thank all the teachers there and, uh, fun. I gave Riley Fendle one and I, I think I told you I would have not given it one. So I'll say that publicly. So, and I got to, I got to run into Brian Fendle a little bit. He's there working. Uh, looking relaxed and, uh, triple just being an advisory role, so.
So. You're doing as much as you can. Absolutely. We're here tonight. I'm calling out, um, Adrian.
No, that, that was made the community, uh, the Schools Community Foundation fundraiser. The E S D Budget Committee meeting, we were talking about waiting for numbers from the E S D and, and their service levels. Uh, we were unable to pass a complete budget that night. So we're going to be meeting again in another week or so. Um, just because a lot of those documents weren't ready. So we'll get to you soon, as soon as we can. Uh, fortunately, I think by that time, the, the state school fund numbers will be a lot more solid, so.
Uh, if I'm not here, I'm doing soccer. And that's about as far as I'm. Soccer something. So we get a new radio station. We got another soccer guy back there.
Are you coaching?
Well, if we get a new radio station, I'll tie them.
Break out the purple suit.
Uh, just, uh, to us, the, uh, community that comes out and puts on the kids' funny tracks for things. Um, every year, it's, uh, all those are, uh, bigger undertakings. It takes lots of volunteers to run track meet, uh, through us to coach Scriven and all the other associate coaches. Um. You're going to make some difference.
Arnie.
All I would say is I've just been laying on my back for three weeks.
All I would say is I've just been laying on my back for three weeks as my eye tries to recover. I go back to Eugene tomorrow to find out if I have to have an operation on it, but other than that, it's been a quiet time.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Arnie. You're a true pilot, though. But I feel like we're close enough for that kind of. Okay, and we have professional service evaluation. Kevin.
All right, this is kind of a long report. Let's kind of read through it. We have it on page. Subdivision.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one. There's eight items that we reviewed from surveys. It's a term of professional service evaluations. Food services with Sedexo. A is Sedexo received average scores of four point six or above out of five across the board. Comments included praises of their ability and willingness to modify procedures to better serve school needs and their professionalism. And then number two on there was the transportation. The first students, students received average scores of four point oh and above out of five across the board. Comments frequently reference issues around drop off and pickup times. Being delayed for an hour or more. Comments also noted that this is likely a result of driver shortage. This is an area for improvement moving forward. Comments also suggested a need for greater transparency into how routes are returning and students are, and students are being placed on routes. The third item on there was the attorney of record. Attorney of record received varying scores from two point one seven to four point oh out of five. With the lowest score scoring being excessively two point five. And problem is at two point one seven. The highest score was professionalism of four point oh. Comments suggested that overall the attorney of record work is satisfactory, however delays in response or no response have impacted time sensitive issues. A majority of responses stated it was unlikely they would wish to continue services with our current attorney of record. The auditor, which is point four on the board. The auditor received average scores of four point six out of five or higher across the board. The current auditor will complete the audit for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, but will no longer be offering their services. Past that, it was noted that we will need to issue an RFP for an auditor sooner rather than later. Item number five is our architect. The H T E received a range of scores from four point two to four point six out of five. All respondents felt certain or very likely they would, they would like to continue services with H T E. Item six was the special education attorney. The Hungerbirds received a range of scores from four point three three to five point oh out of five. Comments noted that the Hungerbirds have provided excellent service over the years and offer and offer monthly online webinars to help the more cost. Some of the notes or comments were all respondents who worked with the Hungerbirds are certainly the like or certainly they would like to continue services with them. The doctor of record, that's the doctor received scores of four point seven five of five across the board. The comments noted that his work is excellent. His office is easy to work with. All respondents are certain they would like to continue services with him. On the back page, we have the insurance. A is Nasperd Huddens Insurance. You see five out of five across the board. All respondents who work with Nasperd Huddens Insurance are certainly they would like to continue services with.
Thank you, Kevin. In light of a few of, I think a couple of these, it looks like we might have someone might make a motion. I know that we've got a couple of options here for, let's see. One of them is our auditor who will no longer be, will be our auditor. So we will need to go for an RFP and that is the process for the attorney of record as well, correct? So we need to make a motion to make, to require RFP. Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, then we'll do that in action items. Thank you, Adrian. Okay, and Policy Committee, David.
All right. So Eli was so gracious to join us at our last policy committee and provided some valuable insight on policy IKF graduation requirements. One we've spent some time in the last few years. But I'll start with policy V F, policy development. Our current version of policy V F has not been updated since two thousand nine. That led us to check with O S B A to make sure we hadn't missed an update. It looks like they had sent out a recommended version in two thousand fifteen before my time. But we found that one and we went ahead and updated to the most recent version. So this new policy is a reflection of O S B's current recommendation for policy V F, policy development. It was minimal changes. One of them was changing his/her language and making clear that the final authority and responsibility for board policy lies with the board. Policy IKF was a little more involved. There have been additional changes to graduation requirements in Oregon as a result of Senate Bill fifteen twenty-two. The bill provided a new definition for an educational program in the state that's listed in the new policy and modified what credits the district shall accept from other educational programs in the state to satisfy credit requirements for a student to graduate. An additional change modified the definition of oral language and graduation requirements to include sign language, heritage language, and languages other than the student's primary language. The policy committee coordinated with Eli Ashton to revise language around diploma and honor supplement requirements. The additional honor supplement requirements were redundant, so we removed a few of those that were redundant. There's still requirements, but they're already listed as requirements. Additionally, the general diplomas will require half credit civics beginning with class of twenty twenty-six. Eli did recommend moving the footnote into the actual language of the policy once the requirement is established or now at the board's discretion. Yeah, and that's.
Is that one of our action items?
To, to move that?
Right.
Um.
I don't see it.
No, yeah.
Oh, oh.
So I figured if you wanted to, we can bring it back to policy committee and we can discuss it there.
Okay.
But I have a feeling we'll be back in IKF before twenty twenty-six.
Yeah, it's coming back around.
Well, yeah, essential skills and.
Right.
That we need to address, so.
Okay, thank you, David. All right, and Goose Bay School District Childcare Committee, I put this on the agenda and added it to the agenda because of some discussions with teaching staff and the need for childcare. And I think this closely runs alongside our early childcare or our early learning initiatives that we're already out there. Karis has been working on. Looking at three to five, but then extending this down to six weeks. That's the age that a child can go into a licensed childcare program and so for our classified, for our teachers and for our teen parents. And so one of the things I would like to see is Karis head up and or shoot out there, a committee to work on this and really, I think it does couple with the early childhood, early learning piece that's already happening. So I know that there's some teachers and probably some classified staff that would be interested in being on that committee as well. There's a lot of things to figure out. And like I said at one meeting, we are in a childcare desert. And so this is very needed across, across our community, but definitely within our school district as well. And I didn't put it under action because I was, I was going to explain it and then it was going to go under action, so. So we can make motion now.
Do you'd like to create a committee headed by our superintendent to?
Or designation.
Or designation? To look into child care for staff. All right. All right, so then I move that we direct our superintendent to create a committee to look into childcare for staff and the teen parent program.
Thank you, Adrian. Do I hear your second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, David. Any discussion?
I'm wondering if we could consider moving that work where we explore childcare for staff and teen parents as part of the currently existing early learning committee. The overlap of the expertise would be it would be duplicative where we can address these issues with the same committee and we can expand the membership.
That's what I was just going to ask.
Yeah.
I think, I think that that would go very well together. So if we could amend our, our motion to expand the scope of the early childhood committee to add in childcare.
Okay, so then I will amend my motion to instead of creating a separate childcare committee to expand the early learning committees and get childcare for staff.
Beautiful. All right. Thank you, Adrian. Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Let's go for a vote. David?
Hi.
Diane? Adrian?
Hi.
Kevin? Dustin? Hi, motion carries. Thank you.
I'll say hi to.
Oh, oh my gosh. What, and I, I, oh my gosh, I I know, I know I'm going to hurt my back by just getting excited. I'm so sorry, Arnie. This is not on purpose. Okay, and now we're on to other action items. So our first one to consider category is to approve the twenty-three, twenty-four school calendar and Chad and Kara silver up.
All right, well, good evening. We are here to present the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four license calendar. This was developed by the Joint Calendar Committee as required in our bargaining agreement. So I think it's, it was based on the results of a staff survey and their preferences. So we can answer any questions, but just a couple of things that are different than maybe the last time we had, for example, New Year's Day and Christmas Day on Monday. There's some differences for this. First of all, we've come up with a calendar where we have the week of Thanksgiving note as no student contact. So you'll see there's various colored days. Some of them are non-paid, some are holiday. One's a conference trade day, so there's different colors that week. And then you'll also note that for winter break, it will be starting on the twenty-second and going through that first week in January. So it's, it's a week, it shifted a week later than what was done, I think in two thousand sixteen was the last time we had this same, where the holidays fall on the same day. And there is, I got asked the other day about weather days. We typically build in a weather day. And there is a weather day built in to the end on June seventeenth. So anyway, that's kind of a snapshot. Highlights, there's other details you can go into and Chad is very good at the details if we want to ask anything.
Can I add one more item there? February twenty-ninth, the seventh to twelfth grade because of the three A tournament. That would be a different date for, normally we're out between one twenty-two and one thirty. And it depends on how the bus schedules end up working out this year where that would be. But we would like to be out at twelve P M at the seven to twelve level to accommodate that tournament so that we don't have the cross traffic in the parking lot and free up space. And we wanted to make sure that we put that out here now because it is a slight change. It's not actually a calendar change. But we just wanted to make sure all of you are aware of that. You're adding your comments there.
That's the twenty-ninth, Chad.
It's usually that's a, it's a shortened day, but just to shorten it a little bit more at the seven to twelve.
Leap year.
I don't like that February, yeah.
I know. Wow. So.
This, this is not subject to change anymore.
So right now we have one weather day. How many weather days do we typically?
Zero. I, I don't think we've used a weather makeup days because I've been on the force. That would be twelve years.
There was one several years ago, but instead of using that day, you have the ability to go to count in our instructional minutes. We have to make sure that this
That's right.
Use our instructional minutes. You have the ability to use thirty hours of our service days by vote to use any of the, versus instructional minutes and then also up to thirty hours as prepared conferences. And instead of using that weather day, the board have voted, is my, is my recollection, where you have voted to use some of the professional development hours so that we didn't have to come back for that extra day.
That's correct. I do remember using professional development hours and I just don't remember ever having to have students come in on.
And if that happens, you'll have a few options because we're not right at the limit for hours that we need to have. Most circumstances, for just one day, you wouldn't be even active with anything. Then you could use that weather day and you could use any of those other hours as you choose.
Thank you, Chad. They're all, they're all off.
So how, how does this calendar line up compared to, for example, other our other area school district in SWAC in terms of winter break and spring break times?
I'm not sure about SWAC, but I know North Bend has the earlier winter break where it would start you know, the week of December eighteenth and they'll come back right after New Year's versus ours differs by pushing it back a week. Are you aware, anyone, of SWAC's calendar? Yeah.
So, well, you know, SWAC changed their terms a couple of years ago. And so now they start earlier in September. They get done with their first term at Thanksgiving and they don't come back. And so basically they have the whole month off and they come back earlier. So theirs now, it's always, their spring break is a week early. And there's nothing we can do about it. Like if we were to adjust and try to meet theirs, we would be off. Our spring break would be off with the rest of the state in spring breaks for high schools. So unfortunately for dual or expanded options of kids, they don't. So it's unfortunate, but that's just the way that now how they made their schedule and we're all the same.
And they were, they were having students leave for Thanksgiving and then they just wouldn't come back, so it made sense for them. To keep my husband home on Thanksgiving all the way through the year.
But we do find, one thing we do find now is for, for the high schools that that week, their spring break is our week of school. And so it's an opportunity for a lot of our juniors and seniors to visit SWAC, give a tour. You know, they do the college one-on-one and so we do take advantage of that opportunity to get kids on campus and tour the school and stuff without there's a lot of, you know, creating a noise or anything for their college, so.
Any other questions or comments?
The spring break, was that light enough?
Yes.
With the door open. So I'll move that we approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school calendar as one in our agenda document.
Thank you, David. Thank you, Dustin. Any discussion?
Yeah, just one little thing. It, it doesn't affect the days of the calendar, but it would be nice, I'm just looking at the Thank you very much. I'm sorry to come that way. You know, like the, the blue section says early release Friday. That should just be early release because then you don't have to make February twenty-ninth an exception. And it would be nice because these are posted on our website to note which days, you know, like conference trade days and grading days. Just to note under those items that those are days that the students are not in school. So when parents are looking at this, it's very obvious for them that you know, there's, there's no school that day for the, for the students. Cause I see that on social media all the time. Hey, is there school this Thursday, this Friday?
It'd be nice just to have a parent. They don't care about conference.
Version, yeah.
Special days, they don't care. Does my kid go to school that day or not? That's all they care about.
Yeah. The man gets a day.
I think it's my microphone's no longer working, so.
Yes, so thank you for inviting me tonight.
Michelle said we will publish specific student calendars.
Oh, we do? Okay, so I was just gonna say, do we need to amend our?
No, it it doesn't change the calendar.
Okay, okay. Thank you for your input, but.
We're not gonna change anything. So let's do a vote. David?
Hi. Hi.
Kevin?
Hi.
Dustin?
Arnie?
Hi.
And I vote I, motion carries. All right. We are we are coming our way through this. Okay, um, Harris, reduction plan.
Open it up. So back at the March Board meeting, um, the board approved um initiating a reduction plan. Um, and in that interim time period, uh, we have been working on meeting with various stakeholder groups and following our collective bargaining agreements around reduction um discussions and planning. We also sent out a survey to all staff to get input for ideas. But I wanted to, I was gonna ask Candace because she did a beautiful job earlier, kind of explain the history and where we are um and what precipitated um the need for us to uh under undergo this conversation. So I was hoping Candace put you on the spot and now you don't have a microphone. Um, but I'm sure Dustin will share his, just to give um a little more detailed explanation as to um how how why we're here today.
Um, yeah, I wasn't really prepared for this. So I I'm, if I miss something, please please ask questions. Um, the reason that we are in this situation is uh goes back to two thousand twenty when the pandemic hit. And um the the state and the federal government was pushing these dollars out um for us to use. And there was what we were calling the ESER committee um that met to determine how we were going to spend ESER one, ESER two, and ESER three. Um, at that time, our enrollment took a pretty big hit and we would have been looking at reducing staff at that time um for the twenty-twenty-one school year based on what our projected enrollments was. Um, but the committees um and everyone felt like, no, let's let's use these dollars to retain our staff, keep our class sizes small. Um, be able to handle some of the things that were thrown at us as far as what the pandemic was requiring. Um, and many of us in in those meetings said, okay, well, we have to understand that um if we're going to be keeping these staff, we're going to have to have some serious discussions here when these dollars go away. Um, all we're kind of doing is putting a Band-Aid on the problem we have right now in twenty-twenty-one. Um, so fast forward to today, these dollars are running out and we had a significant amount of F T E uh being paid for out of ESER. Um. We have been transparent the whole time about having these F T E in ESER. And anyone who has spent much time in meetings where I have been has heard me say, we have this coming up, guys. We we need to start taking advantage of resignations, retirements, um attrition of of whatever type and start taking a look at our previous class size and and try to get ourselves back into the position that we were in. Um, so this isn't because of our general fund. This is because we have F T E in these federal grants that we need to put back into our general fund. That's that's how we got here. That's the position we're in.
Thank you, Candace.
I just wanted to, there's been a little, I think, confusion and but I appreciate um the board initiating this process um now because the federal funds run out next year, but it gives us a two-year runway to work on transitioning these positions from other grant sources into the general fund um so that we don't have to um, you know, face such a steep potential cliff at the end of two years. So it also gave us time. Um, and we wanted to have the board consider this tonight, which is based on the decisions tonight for next year. That is going to impact the budget that Candace and that we're putting together for the budget committee and such. So um uh the timeliness of this will impact uh the budget conversations also with the budget committee. So um after, and I believe I've shared with the board the survey results. Um, so I think in the link, so you can look at the comments we received. But the proposal that um I'm bringing forward tonight is a result of all of those conversations and really looking at kind of the priorities um for what we want to do and considering making these these um uh what we need to do for our budget in order to address the um general fund positions and then where we want to go forward. So the first priority you'll see, I've broken this. If you look in your packet, the last, I think the last, second to last page, I don't see it, thirty-seven. Um, you'll see a a year one where we have been much more detailed and specific. And year two, we'll be having this similar conversation next year. But since there's so many unknown variables about the budget next year, um such as what's the final state school fund that we're going to be uh where we land with bargaining, um there's a lot of pending legislation that could generate additional revenues. Um, there's just so many unknown variables that we will be able to, a year from now, make better informed decisions about any remaining positions. We need to figure out how to fund out of the general fund. We'll have better information to make better decisions. So um that's why uh we've indicated in year two some areas to consider next year, but we're much more specific for for this immediate for upcoming. Um, so what we first did is, of course, we wanted to identify any additional revenue that might be coming to help um offset this. And I called the COSA lobbyist who is working uh obviously very diligently daily with the legislature. And I asked her, are there any um significant revenue sources that are likely to pass for the current during the session now that will impact our budget for next year? And, you know, I said something that you would feel confident in us using the projections for next year, building into our budget projection. So I gave her like that you feel pretty confident that this is going to happen. And the big one that she mentioned, and Arnie, I'm guessing, is listening. He probably has a much closer read on the state legislature. So if Arnie wants to weigh in. But a very significant piece of legislation that there were actually two pieces of legislation um that they've merged into one that has been approved by the House committees and the governor is supporting is an early literacy legislation. And this is what I would call comparable when the High School Success Act, where there were additional funds coming dedicated for grades eight through twelve around high school success. They're using a similar model, a a non-competitive grant process from the state to award districts who are implementing science of reading, early literacy initiatives, um uh additional money. And um are the recommendation I got, there's been a lot of numbers thrown around. But the COSA lobbyist recommended to me, we think it'll be a minimum of a hundred million dollars of additional revenue statewide. And then Candace indicated that a typical rule of thumb based on our student enrollment is when there's an additional hundred million that's going to be distributed um across the district. That's about five hundred thousand for the biennium or two hundred fifty thousand per year. So that's that first line is we'll believe, and we are already implementing our new amplify. We're already implementing science of reading. So we will be able to use these funds to support our, it aligns with what we're already doing. So um that's why for the first line item here, uh included that two hundred fifty thousand dollar estimate of for those early learning initiatives to support the great work that's going on with our littles um around improving reading. Um, the second item, um, we currently have a line item in our budget, a maintenance and repair budget. Um, and we're looking at uh for next year, we're looking at that. We've discussed this in the facilities committee. So Kevin, I don't know if you want to say anything about it, but we discussed in the facilities committee, we can uh based on what we had in it last year, we can reduce what we're having in it um for next year. Based on current year, what we have in it, we could reduce that line item by two hundred thousand. And that remaining part of that line item will fund um the uh Milacoma, the two extra classrooms and and the work at Milacoma. And then um complete the work with the stadium, the 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 Sussex South Side Stadium. And we can do that and and have that two hundred thousand dollar reduction. And then next year, you can see, I've carried that over, when that work is done, we can then look at reducing that further by another two hundred thousand um next year for the maintenance and repair. So um that's where the, do you want to add anything, Candace, that I?
Uh, I just I just want to clarify what that will look like in the budget. Um, and where this came from was we had I don't remember the exact number, but I think it was like one point two million um in this year's budget for Sunset H V. And of course, we're done with that. So that amount we would be reducing um normally, but we are going to any different line item in our transfer to other funds um are going to bump that one up to include the the Milacoma and um Sussex Stadium project completion. So you'll actually see repairing maintenance go down significantly because that one point two million won't be there. But the difference between those two line items will be a two hundred dollar um decrease. Thank you.
Um, the next, um, we have been talking this year about looking at reconfiguring our online learning program, and that is independent of um this reduction process. But I know several people here, Chad, Kayla, you're like several folks, we've been having conversations around what our online learning program should look like. Um, so I don't know, Chad, if you want to talk at all about the reconfiguration model we're talking about. Um, I can give you the bottom line, but if you wanted to give a quick synopsis.
Uh, we want to keep our K to five teacher here because of the littles and to increase the con the contact with our own personnel here in the district. So that's not gonna change. However, the six to twelve, um, we have teachers local and across the state. And we felt like it's it's quite a bit for them to teach so many different preps because, for instance, our math teacher is teaching from sixth to twelfth grade math and all these different places of maths. And and possibly electives also. We were in a place where students wanted to take electives that really didn't have the support for because of, you know, that wide range of preps. And we're we're gonna go with the amp or the ingenuity teachers um instead because they, if you're a ninth grade math teacher for ingenuity, that's what you teach. If you want, if you're a German teacher, then you teach German. Um, whereas in the past, it was a little bit fun because if a teacher wanted or a student wanted to take one of these other electives, most other teachers would commentate and said, okay, but remember, I'm not gonna be able to do that much with that. Um, so it's going to increase our catalog of what we can offer to students with more support. There'll be more flexibility. And then we'll also end up saving um some funding by going that route. So we're going to pick up some of what we can offer and also save money just in time. It's also gonna provide more electives too. Right now, if you look at our online program, the elective options is very limited. Yes, mostly like this, we are, you know, we have four coronary teachers. They don't have expertise to teach those electives. Um, and even the electives that they do teach, like, you know, last year we were offering like engineering, intro to engineering. I mean, they had no idea what they were doing and and not their fault. It was just, so now we have, we'll be able to tap into people who actually are experts in those. So.
And the next one is, um, this year in the central office, um, we added a communications and community engagement position. And that position has been instrumental in assisting in meeting all of the requirements for the development of the integrated guidance plan. Um, and we use the student investment account grant funds help support that position um to meet all those O D E requirements. But we have created the plan and so um as much as we need, obviously, community, there's never enough communications, but as an area that we can look at reducing, we're putting that position um into this reduction plan, uh which would result in a layoff of an individual. So we say we try to minimize layoffs. There are there are going to be one point five positions in this plan that will be result in like other, all the other positions are about, um, we talked about reducing positions, not people, because through attrition, through transfers to open position, um, other staff, based on their own individual choice, um, won't necessarily, they won't be laid off. They will have a choice whether to accept, like, for example, a transfer position or not, or through attrition, they will move into an open position. So um, that's one of them. We've also, during custodian, there was F T E um retained for additional support for custodial services to help like with the cleaning and the requirements. Again, so we're looking at reducing that position, not a person, not an individual around that. Um, uh, another position we're looking at, Destinations has a half-time classified security position. Um, Destinations is moving up here next year. It's going to have a lot of administrators in this building, including including myself. So um we uh um Kayla will be up here, we'll all be up here um with that. So that was an area we felt that could be reduced, that position. Um, again, the 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 last two are positions that due to student enrollment. One for a third grade position at Sunset and one through differing um grade level numbers of students on I A Ps. We're looking at reducing positions, but again, not people because there are other openings that individual teachers will will move through. And again, those last two, like most of these, um, except for the two layoffs, we probably would have done regardless uh because of changing student enrollment uh over time. So with that proposal, um, we're just at about, obviously, we rounded numbers. So you're looking at about a million dollars um um in reductions in this plan, um, which is about halfway where we might be, but we'll have better numbers next year as to how much um we actually will need to continue for next year. So is there anything else you, anybody, did I? This has been a a collaborative involved process and I'm um um so there's been a lot of great minds thinking and working on this to come up with a way um to approach this with really minimal, as much as we could, impact on um staffing and really trying to protect the classroom. You want to add anything?
Do you have any questions?
So how how many F T E did we have in the HESR funds when we started?
So how, how many F T E did we have in the Heser funds when we started this process? I remember seeing the number, it was like eighteen or twelve or sixteen.
Sixteen point five.
Quite a few. I mean, we knew we were going to come to this, and we were right, we were not. We thought unknown when we went on, I started this, I knew we were going to have to.
And you know, I I just want to reiterate, um, again, just based, you know, I've been getting a lot of feedback and comments about this. The decision to do this was to keep the class sizes small during COVID, which absolutely is, you know, very needed during that time. Um, with everything going to hybrid and remediation and attendance, I mean, everything, the challenge was tremendous. So it was the intent for behind duty this was really about supporting students. Um, and I I can't emphasize that that was a really significant and important um investment in students.
Do you have any questions or comments?
I would like to take the opportunity to ask, Kayla's here, not to put you on the spot, but um. Oh. Somebody's using the bathroom back there, we got some feedback. All right, so I just. Kayla, the resource officer, was that, was that out of Esser funds? And is that something that you had when you were at Harding? Or do you probably wouldn't know?
I, no, I do not know.
Okay, Candace knows.
Uh, well, I think that there's, just to make sure I understand what you're saying. Um, a resource officer is our police officer.
Secure, security.
Okay, okay. Um, this security position has been funded by the general fund, and we have had it for, for.
Yeah, I want to say, because when I started, it was John Lamont, it was like halftime, like, it's like a kind of an attendance advocate, yay, and then
Security.
Got slashed into half times, you know, halftime.
And that, and that was during the time that it was at Harding Building as well?
Yep.
Yep.
Thank you for that. I, I think I still have another question then. So, so we're not going to need that position because we're here. They're going to be here. Aren't there other teachers at Harding as well? Or is it just because there's not as many admin or?
Um, well, there's, there's been quite a change in enrollment from what it was at Harding to what just temporarily it will be next year.
Okay.
Um, and there's there's a difference in student behaviors being on a high school campus versus being a little more remote and not close to town. Here, I mean, there's, there are some differences. And so, I mean, there was some collective conversations about this could be the way that we help meet our reduction um temporarily with the numbers that we will have. That doesn't mean that we might not need it again in the, in the future.
Okay.
I just wanted to add, thank you for allowing me, I I just wanted to add that this, this um elimination of this position is not going to compromise student safety. Uh, the position over time, though, called security, um, does not directly result in a compromise, you know, it's eliminating this position is not going to compromise student safety. There have been other tasks that have been assigned to that position that fall outside of that, so to speak. Um, but I don't believe that we will see a result in a compromise in any safety-related measures.
Thank you. That's actually what I was looking for. So wonderful. Okay.
I have a question, just, this is the action item, right?
Yes.
So I guess I'm a little unclear on, you know, if I vote for this as an action, I really, what is it doing? Because I don't think it probably directing, the superintendent can exactly follow this by the letter. I mean, I, I mean, I'll be giving a general approval of this as an approach, I guess. I'm guessing that's the case, because I know when it comes down to making decisions, you don't get to follow this certain rigid template necessarily, at least in that it's my right here, so.
That's a good point.
Well, I think, I mean, this is following board policy in that the board will approve the reduction plan. Now, if there's any significant difference to it, I would have to come back to the board and discuss it with the board, um, depending on changing conditions. Like, if the COSA lobbyist was absolutely wrong and the early literacy bill dies, then we'll come back and discuss it. More, I don't know, Arnie, have you heard anything about the early literacy bill or?
I have not. I, my opinion is it's probably going to make it through.
Yeah. So that would be an example where if we, if conditions change, then we, I'd come back and give you an update.
So that that looks like somehow it's really quite, look quite different in some category now you come back to the board.
Five percent difference.
I guess I'm similar to that, you know, things blended.
So we're approving this exact plan.
And then this will go into the budget document, which you will consider for the, yeah, the budget committee process.
Well, I'll go ahead and vote then, that we approve the uh twenty twenty-three, twenty-four uh reductions plan as presented.
Can you hear a second? Oh, Arnie was, Arnie did it. I saw you, Arnie. Sorry, Dusty. Arnie seconded. All right, any other discussion? All right, I'm going to start with you, Arnie. Go ahead, we're voting. Hi. Thank you, David.
Hi.
Kevin.
Hi.
Dustin.
Uh.
Hi. So our reduction plan is set forth. Okay, and approved calendar adjustment to eliminate early release on the last day of school and make a paid packing day for destinations pre-K. K five online and Resource Center is what I added earlier. Oh, Resource Link, I apologize. So.
So what, um, what's the purpose of this calendar, Dustin?
This is a parallel, the board already approved Mila coma, taking the state to pack um up and move. And the same way, um, Mila coma needs to pack up and move. Um, these other, these are the other impacted programs that are moving.
Thank you for that clarification, Adrian.
I'll go ahead and make the other motion.
All right, thank you, David.
Approving calendar adjustment to eliminate early release on last, we'll make it a packing day. For destinations, pre-K, K five, line, resource link.
All right.
Great, I'll second.
Thank you, Adrian. Any other discussion? Not hearing any. Arnie?
Hi.
Dustin.
Hi.
Kevin.
Hi.
Adrian.
Hi.
David.
Hi.
Hi. Our motion carries, we've, we've got one more thing on here, let's do this. Oh, no, there's two. Oh, my gosh. Consider whether or not to issue any RFPs for professional services, we talked about this earlier, so.
Um, I just would move that we uh do RFPs for our attorney of record and also for auditor.
Thank you, Adrian. Give your second. Oh, sorry, Diane got it. Diane, thank you so much for the second. And any discussion on this? All right, Arnie.
Hi.
Dustin.
Hi.
Kevin.
Hi.
Adrian.
Hi.
Diane.
Hi.
David.
Hi.
Hi, motion carries. And now we are to the last action item. Approved Resolution twenty nineteen oh five, adjusting appropriations. Candace.
Okay, so when you uh adopt the budget, um, you are giving me authority to spend in certain function areas. Um, and in order to, you know, I, Oregon budget law does not allow me to overspend in in those areas. So in order to transfer from one function to another within the same fund group, I need uh you to approve a resolution to do so. And the reason that we are in this situation here is in our capital projects fund, which is where we have our bond funds and and we do improvements to our facilities. I put too much money in the two thousands, which is support services. That's where we've been paying for um uh, like the gig yeast to help us, our architect of record, um, our engineering services on our buildings. And I need it to be in the four thousands, which is facility acquisition and construction, which is where we're paying uh part knee and um the things that are actually increasing the value of our buildings. So I need your approval to move two million dollars from support services into the four thousands within the capital projects.
Thank you. All right, do we have a res, or a motion to approve the resolution of twenty nineteen oh five?
I make a motion to approve Resolution twenty nineteen dash oh five, adjustment and preparation.
Thank you, Dustin. Second.
I'll second it.
Arnie, all right. Any discussion on this or questions? Arnie?
Hi.
Dustin?
Hi.
Kevin?
Hi.
Adrian?
Hi.
Diane? David?
Hi.
Hi, motion carries. And then we have just, remind them, where's my agenda? Future agenda items, do we have any future agenda items that people want to ask or add? All right, well, hearing none, if you want to add any future agenda items, now is not your only time to do so, you can email Charis or myself and we can add those. All right, and we're going to adjourn the meeting. Woo-hoo, thank you, everyone.
Thanks to all. Bye-bye.
See you, Arnie.